This conference will now be recorded.
We have six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few amendments to the agenda.
Yes, quite a few. So we don't have another meeting until July 17th, so I was allowing this. Whatever came up, I put on here so we can get it done. The first add is the work session minutes B, under the consent agenda. And then I added Holly as A point one, but I don't see Holly. So somewhere in there when Holly gets here, slip her in, Bob. And we'll give it a number on the, on the minutes at that point, or a letter, letter, number, whatever. Letter G is a resolution authorizing the city administrator. It's just increasing the expenditure amount from thousand to five thousand. That resolution is in there. And then we should probably set another work session date. So that's letter H under new business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Aye.
Aye, passes four zero. Let's see, public comments. Individuals may address the city council upon any concern. Speakers must state their name and limit their remarks to five minutes. Anyone for public comments? I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be approved by one motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Down to accounts payable, Mr. Rash.
Kim, a little bit this morning, just on a couple of items, the inspection fees, I just brought up the data and that's just, or that's all coming, I mean, gets paid or whatever and it's, we, what did you say we make on approximately like on building permits?
Yeah, so the building permits that we get from the.
Nobody on anyway, so it doesn't matter.
The building permits that we get.
The fees that we get in for the building permits, the building inspector gets all of the planner view fees, but of the other fees, we get, we get 20%, he gets 80%. So it ends up being not as much as you'd think because there is also sewer fees and such that come up before that, so. But it's a, you know, $10,000, $15,000 this year, so. Or last year, I should say.
Double for June, meeting of June 18th, 2025?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Public hearings, we have ordinance 2025 oh three for rural service districts. Miles?
Yes, Deputy Mayor and Council. So starting in 2020, Goodhue County started to require, or Goodhue County Finance and Taxpayer Services requires each city in the county to review the tax ratio and parcels within our service district and certify them each year so that they can make sure their tax rates are correct. They're taxed 80% of their total value. This is because these are agricultural properties, mostly outside of town, but they're still as Umbroda address or tax ID. And so we certify them because they don't garner the same amount of value each year. And so each year I go out and I look at the properties to make sure there was no development that year, or they didn't put any commercial or industrial development there. And this year we had no changes from last year, so all the IDs are the same. These are all just agricultural farm properties and we're just required by state statute in Goodhue County to certify them each year. And so from here, I'll just send it off to Goodhue County, but just looking for direction tonight from council. Well, I guess technically it's a public hearing, so if there's any public comments.
You gotta open up.
Yep, I opened this up for a public hearing for the ordinance. If anyone is here to address that. If not, we'll close the public hearing on that and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number 2025 dash zero three.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's only a.
Nope, it's a, it's a ordinance, so. Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Unfinished 2026 budget. Kim?
Nothing new for you tonight after speaking last week, just continue to ask you for your comments, questions. I know Bob wasn't asking some questions today. I like those, so. I would like to see us in the future, starting a budget committee with maybe two members from council and the mayor so that you guys are more apprised on it and can pick it apart more and ask more questions.
Any other questions, Kim? Okay, we'll go on to new business, the 2024 city audit review and approval. Mark?
How's everybody doing? So, and you know, I can't. Sit and talk. I've got to wander. Basically, a couple of very important things happened just prior to this in the meeting. We had accounts payable review. That is critical. You're looking at this, that's actually becomes part of the internal control system by doing that. So that's the reason it's so important. And I read all of the minutes and I see every time you approve the budget. So that's critical. It's part of the internal control structure. Guess what else is part of the internal control structure? The budget. The budget is one of your main tools to say, okay, you know, no, we can't do this, we can't do this, we can't do this, or whatever, or modify it. And also, if there's variances in the budget, you know, you folks need to decide, okay, what happened? You know, why, why did this happen? What's going on? Do we need to reallocate budget to account for this, decrease one thing and increase the other accordingly? Now, if your budget basically agrees 100% all the time, yeah, there's a problem. So you're going to have variances. And one of those very big frauds in the US government was a department that actually did have it all agree. Because if he had less than his budget amount, he just took the difference. So once, that just kind of shows why it is so important to, you know, to, to value this entire process. So, okay, let's go back up a little bit. Okay, right there. So right now we have the same staff we've had in several prior years, which is myself, Mark Murch, I am a CPA. And I've been doing, I hate to say it, auditing for 30 years. Ow! When I was four, exactly. Had a height comment?
I can do that. I'm the same height.
Jennifer Middlestaff and Andrew are both enrolled agents. So that makes them, it's lower than a CPA, but it's, 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 and it's primarily a tax thing. But, but they also, they both worked very hard and actually, well, I can't believe it. You know, there's some, there are staff members that are working on their CPA. And I'm very proud of it because that's a, that is a hard test. I can still recite, you know, a lot of the stuff I learned to get ready for the CPA exam. Okay, now on to the fun. All right, let's go to the next one. The staff is very helpful. They do a great job performing the option, doing the accounting functions. Once again, you've heard this every year. Why have you heard it every year? Because if there are problems, if staff is a problem, we're going to be talking before we get to this point. Because when I audit, I don't just blindly audit, you know, hey, this number matches, okay, fine. I also look at, how is staff? I mean, if somebody is basically always, you know, looking away from me or I don't get stuff, then we're going to have a discussion. And potentially I'll change my audit programs if it's appropriate or whatever. And actually I've discovered frauds right there with me testing and people changing stuff in front of me. Who thinks it's a good idea to change stuff in front of an auditor? You know, and that one ended up with the BCA. I worked with a BCA on some of that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's very important. We get what we need, when we need it, and everybody does a really good job. It took a long way to win you this year. Okay, in the past, you've always had what called clean opinions. Nothing to worry about, nothing even remotely to be concerned about. What's happened is para, you know, I was doing some additional review of some of the para stuff, and a defined contribution plan, which you may or may not have on some instances, but you do have a defined benefit plan for some of the, you know, for basically the employees, you know, in this room. Okay, so, so basically with that, I'm relying on another auditor. And I'm, it's, it's, you know, this is a, a new thing, so I'm continuing to look at, look at it. But by no means is this any kind of a dig against the city. It's simply stuff I have to say because somebody else, because I don't audit para. I would not pair anyway, but you know, that's, so that's, that's what that is. The financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with governmental accounting standards. So that's what you use, governmental accounting standards. You know, what Jeff, the format of the financials and so forth, so on. Excuse me. And that requires the finances being a GASB 34 format. So, so basically, that's just a fact of life. Now, we're adding another component this year, oops. Stand still. We're adding another component this year because now some of the standards that I use are going to start impacting more directly your audit, specifically. Go ahead, go to the next one.
Trying to get, see if Holly's coming.
So. Basically, recent auditing. I'm sorry. I really like the lapel mics.
Well, we're working on that too.
Recent auditing standards, SaaS 145 and 146, statement on auditing standard, which is me. This is what I have to do when I audit. Okay, those two standards are requiring a sharper focus on internal control. We do internal control reviews and segregation of duties and, you know, what you folks need to do with the accounts payable and the budgets and so forth and so on. But this is another step, okay? And Kim and I have talked about this extensively, as well as what's called the yellow book. Now, the yellow book does not apply to you at this point. If you spend over 750,000 of federal financial assistance, then the yellow book applies. Okay? So it's, once again, that's another layer where I have more responsibilities as an auditor. The other significant thing here is that basically, even if nothing goes wrong, I may have to disclose deficiencies in the internal control system just because you didn't document everything right, which is kind of a newer thing. You know, what I do is if it's wrong, well, then I report it. If there's a problem, we deal with it. Now, even if nothing is wrong, I may have to report it. So what is my preferred method of, well, there's two ways of documenting your internal control is obviously by writing it all out. The other tool I like is flow charts. Flow chart, do you remember the green templates we all used to use? Yeah. Flow charting is a huge tool. It's actually coming back into vogue now. You know, you use symbols to indicate the steps and that very, very precisely indicates any potential weaknesses or lack of control or redundancies and so forth. So you can go and go to the next one. So. Flow charting facility, understanding the control points such as segregation of duties and approvals. I mean, it's, that's my most preferred method of looking at internal controls is through flow charting. It does help demonstrate compliance with SaaS 145 and 146. Okay? If, because I get, I get audited too. Every three years I have something, somebody called a peer reviewer come in. And if I don't have this in my bailiwick, then, you know, then there's, there's going to be issues. It can also identify process opportunities. If, if, if you have a process that's a little bit long or, you know, it's, it's got some issues. That's also, you know, a way to that. And it can also obviously then streamline your processes if you've got too much redundancy. So Kim, Kim said she's going to be working on that this summer. Okay. I'm not going to spend a lot of times, you've seen this before, but you need to understand that I don't just come in, look at something and say, yeah, everything's good. These are the procedures we perform as a part of an audit. And I've said this before, you know, we go talk to the bank, we talk to the investment company, we talk to anybody who holds debt, your bonding and so forth. We review balances and review the collectability of balances and fixed assets. We go out and look at them. You buy it, we look at it. They haven't let me drive anything really big yet, but that's, that's just a matter of time. And that's actually a very critical component because there was a famous. Incident in Dixon, Illinois, if you've talked about that. The town clerk. Emboldened over $50 million over the years. Things like, and actually I learned about this fraud while I was here auditing several years ago. And basically road repair, okay? You do a major road repair, I go look at it. You do, you know, something of that, I go look at it. I go look at all your fixed assets. She was billing people or billing those to the city or township or whatever it was, and nothing was happening. So of course, assuming they did that, I, I got together with my team and we said, okay, would we have discovered it? And yes, we would have. Another famous case was in Russia where someone was, had a very nice factory, except all it really was was a barn. So this is why some of this is, is important as well. So, but that's there if you like. Brian's got a copy, okay? Now, we've talked about this before too. GASB 34, which was implemented 10, 15 years ago. I have to do things two ways. I have to do each of the funds in the traditional fund format that you folks use. And I have to pull it all together in a full accrual basis. Currently your, your fund balance, funds are all in a, what's called a modified accrual. Means you know, if I'm going to get it in 60 days, okay, or I got to pay in 60 days, it's included in the financials. But it has to be full accrual, which is what a business uses. Their, their purpose for that was, hey, let's, let's, you know, let's make this look like a business. Well, of course, they failed horribly with that. And if you're governmental, you're used to how it works and what goes on, but it is what it is. And there are disclosures. I have a very specific format I need to use for disclosures and we do that as well. Okay. Can everybody read this?
Okay.
This is, this is basically your, you know, one part of your financials. I do several financials. And these are your major funds. Major funds are ones that either have impact or are appropriate to, to show. The general fund, the library fund, those are required. Now, we get over here, you can see the one debt service fund, that's, that's going to be dead in 2025. But you only have two debts. Okay, that's huge. I've seen cities that have 15, 20 different debts, bonds and so forth. So you've only really got this one at this point. So that's huge. That's huge, down to one. And we'll talk a little later when we get to the per capita amounts because I can tell from looking at what the state auditor puts out, who's really keeping up with their maintenance. That's the impact of this. You keep up your maintenance, keep up what you're going, what you're doing and take care of your stuff. Then you don't have some of the variances I see such as, hey, we've got a really big debt burden and we're not spending anything on our streets. That means they wait till it's dead and then they decide they're going to turn around and do something about it and they have to bond for it. And then the non-major funds, everything else is, is, is right here. And in the financial itself, it'll all be, it's all detailed out, but that's where the smaller funds go. Okay? Next one please.
For Captain.
Info. Now, unfortunately, this year, the state auditor did not have the 2023 numbers. So this is the 2022, just in 22. Typically I do a comparison. You know, hey, what was the change between, you know, like this year and last year? But you can see here, population that's close to you. What, where are you at with, with, with these items? Here, Goodhue's got a lower property tax per capita than you do, but everybody else is larger. And you can see, for instance, here, they've got 1,200 people and they're a little bit lower, but Cap Falls is a little bit bigger and has more debt. Okay, so, so. That's a, or I'm sorry, more property taxes. The other revenues, expenditures, capital outlay, debt service. The ones I look at are, what are your property taxes? Well, I look at all of them. But capital outlay, okay? Goodhue has, has a very small amount of capital outlay. I mean, they can't find anything because look at their debt burden. See, that was what I was talking about earlier. You've got a high debt burden per capita and that tells me, they don't fix it till it's broke. And it's a major problem. And then they have to bond and have debt. So you can see there, look how well Umbroda's doing compared to the other cities. And once again, this is broken down as a per capita basis because, that means it's comparable. They're, they're different cities, but, excuse me, they're different cities, but we've, we've reduced it to, you know, the, the, each individual person from that city. Right? Reportable condition. Yes, you have a reportable condition and you will, and you'll continue to have it. Now, what is a reportable condition? It's segregation of duties. You don't have enough people in your accounting department to make sure nobody can get their hand in the, you know, in the till. It is, I do not have, I don't have any clients who do not have this as a, as a condition because you can't afford 10 accountants here to divide all the pieces up. But what you can do is look at accounts payable, talk about the capital projects, look at the other things. So that's where you as a board are intrinsically part of the internal control system. And that's why it's so important. Review the expenses. If you have questions, talk to them about it. You know, make sure it's valid. Make sure all the appropriate okays are done. You know, that type of thing. So you do have that. And then you do have what's called a governance letter. Now that one basically says that, you know, I didn't have any problem with anybody, sometimes. Just kidding. I didn't have any problem with anybody. You know, I didn't have somebody giving me undue pressure. I didn't have anyone who, you know, was trying to impede what I was doing. So, and that's, that's going to be clear as well because like I said in the beginning, everybody's been very cooperative. And once again, I don't say that. And I have withdrawn from engagements when it's a, when it's a problem. Okay, is that it? Thank you. Any questions? Now, I don't remember seeing YouTube before. Was that like the most dynamic presentation you've ever heard?
Keep the auditor happy, yes.
So, any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
The audit review. Hey, Ricky.
Aye.
Passes four zero. Holly isn't here. We'll go down to 2025 street improvements, bids and plans. Blake?
So you look in your council packet, we have included what the 2025 street improvements are. We are looking to reclaim and pave two different parts of town, Dubuque Boulevard and Sugarloaf Parkway. This is not a full reconstruct like you've seen the past couple of years on Jefferson Drive and Mill and Sixth Street. This is simply grinding up the pavement down to the aggregate, shaping it and paving on it again with, with a little bit of maintenance to some surface items, but it's not a, not a full on reconstruct. We had two bids on it. The first was Azleken Services and the winner was Rochester Sand and Gravel. They were slightly over our estimate of $159,000, but they were $160,680. We've worked with Rochester Sand and Gravel in the past extensively and they have recently paved Jefferson Drive and they're working on East Ninth Street. They're, they're a good company to work with. So with that, we recommend awarding the 2025 street improvements project to Rochester Sand and Gravel. You have any questions?
Which three areas are we looking at again?
It's, it's in your packet. It would be Dubuque Boulevard. So that would be from Jefferson Drive to East Twentieth Street. It's a few hundred feet. And then, actually two areas. It's Sugarloaf Parkway would be the other one. So it'd be just west of the county fairgrounds, west, a few hundred feet also. So I think originally there was a third street, but that got taken off, maybe be done in the future, but wanted to do a little more work looking at that one first, so. Yes, it would have been Willowmere.
Willowmere, yep. So we talked a little bit more about Willowmere. One of the reasons it was on for this year was the feeling that we need to get some subdrain in there to alleviate that iceberg that formed last year. Upon looking at the, the plans and, and we realized there, there is subdrain in there. So we're going to take a little closer look at that subdrain, make sure it's functioning. The surface of Willowmere was still serviceable for a while yet with the exception of a couple of driveways. And that is in here as well, the patches for, there was a couple of houses just up from yours that have issues at the bottom of the driveway. So we're going to patch those, but hold off on Willowmere. We're going to try and alleviate that water issue. Figure out if the subdrain's working, if it's, if it's, the subdrain is fine and it's coming from a backyard and figure out a way to, to alleviate that, that. So we're going to look at that as well.
So basically just holding off until we get a little more information.
Yeah.
Find out.
Yeah, it'll be on the schedule. It'll stay on the schedule at some point, but, but we're going to, in the short term. You know, the feeling was there's five to 10 years left in that road surface is what, what Bill was, was telling me. And it was accelerated because of that subdrain issue, because we wanted to get some drained. But again, it is in there, so we kind of regrouped and those dollars will remain in here. We are talking a little bit about a possible change order out on Sugarloaf. Because this project is doing just the, in front of those houses, we own both sides of the road there. Once we get past that up this way towards number six's T box, well, this is five's green, I think, or, or four's green maybe. But up past this, we still own half the road up to six's T box. And we can do a change order up to 20% of the cost of the project and do our half. If the homeowners out there can, can talk with the township or. or come up with the money themselves to do their half. They've been asking for this for years, and we've got an opportunity to do that this year while we're there. It'd be much cheaper to have them do it while they're there as well, rather than going back and catching that half of the road at a future date. So, again, we're just looking at that. That'll come back to council if we're gonna do that, but.
Willamere, now, that's, are we gonna, I mean, you're gonna look at the subdrain and stuff for that? Because I know you said five to ten years on the road, but that was the main issue up there, was mainly we should try to get it dried out. So are we looking like in, like this year yet, or next year?
The subdrain is there, we know it's there.
Right, but we don't know if it's working, or if, is it one that we can, the people can put their sump pump into, or we don't know any of that, do we?
No, that's, I believe that's what it is. We're just gonna...
And the subdrain is to route stuff like sump pumps into it.
Yeah, and we're thinking that iceberg situation that we had, I call it the iceberg, because it was almost all the way across the road, is due to a lot of water in those backyards, maybe not even going into the sump pump. But they had a subdrain put in back there to bring it to the front, I believe. There's a pop-up near the curb. So we're gonna look at maybe digging down there and putting a bunch of P-rock or some gravel, whatever the engineering stuff would be, to take that water down to that subdrain from the surface. So there's some options we're gonna look at there, but yeah.
Pushing down, all five to ten years?
No, we'll look at that as part of this as well. And again, it might have been a function of the winter, too. We had an odd winter last winter. Talking to some of the public works, the streets guys, they said it might not happen again. If we don't have a winter like that, if we get snow first and then cold, then the water's gonna stay there in the snow. You know, it's gonna soak up there rather than getting so much into the road. But again, we don't wanna take our chances on that either. So we'll take a look at it. Oh, we need a motion, yes.
To award the project to Rochester Sand and Gravel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
S is four zero. Let's see, then we go to the City Hall Police Roof Repair. Again, Blake.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So the City Hall Roof Repair, we got three quotes in from it. We estimated it to be $80,000 to repair the roof. We had two quotes actually come in under that. They were very competitive, with the low one being Canuson Construction. I was less involved in the nitty-gritty of this. All I can say is, our structural engineers have assigned repair to fix the police hall, and Canuson Construction's quote was $66,760. With that, we do recommend awarding the project to Canuson Construction. So, any questions about that?
I was reading in there, exclusions here where it says roofing or roof drain work. I mean, that roof's sagged quite a bit, so apparently they're pushing that roof back up.
Yes, that'd be my understanding, yes. They are trying to restore it to the way it was.
And so if there is some issues with the roof, what happens then?
Well, they had Schwickert's out to look at that and talk through that. And Schwickert said that there shouldn't be a problem with raising that back up.
There are...
Yeah, ballasted, ballasted. They did check that out, ask those questions, and that was the answer.
Something, when they do do that, will they test that? Or do we gotta wait for rain to see if it works or not?
Inspections of all of that. We'll know if there's anything wrong. We'll have Schwickert's back out, maybe, to look at the roof and do the inspection right away, so.
It still would be covered under insurance, too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, anything that, anything involved in this should be covered under insurance at this point, after our deductible, of course. Oh, and that was a good point, too. It has been sent to Brian Pockert at the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and he has approved the quotes as well, and the contractors. So they have got a process they go through to approve contractors and quotes and all that stuff. And they're okay with this, so.
I will make a motion to award the project to Canuson Construction.
I'll second that.
Let me go to the Tressle Bridge Repairs Payment Number One, Blake.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So the work on the Tressle Bridge is complete, actually. The only thing we're waiting on for the opening is for the inspection to be updated in MINDOT's SIM system. It's their bridge inventory on mine. When I checked at three o'clock today, it was not yet open. But we're just awaiting the results of inspection performed last week to be there. The bridge should be open and ready to go again. With that, they have a pay request for their work coming through, and we recommend payment for it in the amount of $156,167.91. Looking at it, maybe Brian, you can read those, too. But it looks like there might be a lumber reimbursement coming up after this to finish off the project. But this is for their work today, excluding lumber reimbursement.
Yep, yeah, so there was a little extra lumber, and we're still talking about whether we own that lumber, in which case we will take it over to the auction over here and sell it, because we've done well over there, or if they're gonna give us a lumber reimbursement. So we're still working with, working through that. And you'll notice on here that the retainage is still there, the 5% retainage. And so as we work through those things, then you'll see the final come through when it's approved. Jake Rezak went out and did the inspection of the bridge. He gave that to Jess Greenwood, and Jess needs to review that and then put it into the SIMs system, which is the statewide bridge system as approved. And then we're good to go. But yeah, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's, they did a nice job. Surface looks great, the superstructure will hopefully last us for four or five years. Give some more grant money and get the new one up there. But it's very safe now.
Make a motion to approve the pay request.
Excuse me, sorry, I didn't clarify. We also are recommending acceptance of the project to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to do the pay request and accept the project.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero.
Are we working with the snowmobile club? Are they gonna put rubber pads down again?
It's him talks. Yeah, to break that trail in the two-section block here, it's snowmobile.
Yeah, that's an interesting thing that, thanks for... Hear that, Jeff? Yeah, Larry did talk to me about that. And we're looking at trying to come up with a way to have a, in the winter, having a snowmobile kind of side of it with the rubber on it, and then another side where the walkers can go, so people can still walk. Because in the winter, if you walked across it now, where the rubber part is really slippery, when there's not enough snow on it. But if there's a place that we can walk, we can clear that off and be able to walk across that area of it. So we're still working on the logistics of that. But yeah, good question.
Let's go to E, Highway 58 Rectangular Rapid Flash and Beacons Payment Number Three. Again, Blake.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So this project, too, is completed. So if you go down Main Street now, you should be able to see all the rapid flash and beacons. Perhaps you had the pleasure to use one crossing the street or been stopped by a rapid flash when driving down it. But the project is completed, so we are recommending that you pay and accept for this project. And that will start a two-year maintenance period of both the concrete they used to patch in the beacons and all the, you know, associate electronics and hardware that go with them. This project was fully funded by MINDOT's local partnership program. So, yeah, we recommend paying for it and accepting the project, so.
Everything's been cleaned up?
Okay.
Jeff walked with them out there, so.
Yeah, they returned, yeah, we walked once, and then they still have a couple, couple meetings. They returned a second time, and then addressed the second trip, so.
Thank you.
Motion for the payment of the beacons?
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero.
And those beacons are really, really well-received. Everybody downtown loves them. They're doing their job, and people are pushing the button. Still a lot of jaywalkers, but...
Still see people, like, they'll cut towards the crosswalk, they just hit the button. It's hugely effective.
Were they on a grant? Was that the takeaway?
Yes, LPP, local...
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's the LPP, Local Partnership Program.
That's right, LPP.
But state money for the trunk highway system, yes.
They pay for the whole thing, then?
Down to F, DFA variance. Miles.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. So Dairy Farmers of America is seeking a variance on their lot, on their property. And this is to post three signs in the city right-of-way. They would just be used for navigation for truck drivers going in and out. And they're gonna be kind of right on North Star Drive. I think there's some pictures in the packet there of what their proposal was for. So they're just looking for three post-signs. I think, I don't know exactly what the material they were using. But the only reason they're seeking a variance is because it's gonna be in the right-of-way. And our zoning ordinance says that they have to be at least ten feet off the right-of-way or property line. However, they would be on the concrete if that were the case, since they have a big lot, parking lot. And so Planning Commission recommended approval of this variance, and they held a public hearing, and there was no issues with it. And so staff is recommending approving, and with concurrence with the Planning Commission as well.
And that PR one up here, there was a sign there.
Yeah, I think they... Yep, they had said that there was there previously, but we just put them through the variance process because we felt we wanted to make sure that they had one in the first place, just in case they didn't have one before or whatnot. So we put them through kind of more of a just-in-case basis. So this isn't as, this isn't something we feel is very controversial whatsoever. The signs are only, they're three feet wide by five feet tall. So smaller than a average person, I'd say.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Then we've got Resolution 2025-24, authorizing the city administrator to approve expenditures up to $5,000 without city council approval. Brian.
Yep, we spoke about this at the work session, and it used to be a thousand. It's been a thousand dollars for a long time. I don't know when that was even put into place, told them quite a while ago. Things are way more expensive now. And what this would do, raising that a little bit, will allow me to, a little bit more efficiency in running the city on a day-to-day basis. There's a lot of things, public works, plant-wise, streets-wise, and things like that, that we used to get for a thousand dollars, and that's okay to keep things moving. Can't do that anymore. So $5,000 gives us a little bit more leeway. And again, it says in the resolution, it's budgeted money anyway, or as well. Just typically, I would have to hold things and bring it to a council meeting in two weeks. Or in this case, if something came up now, I'd have to wait for a month. And sometimes we can't wait for a month, we have to get going on something, so. So just requesting to raise it to $5,000, that threshold. My clarity, and they reviewed the resolution, made a couple of tweaks, so everything's in order with the resolution. Just looking for approval for a little bit higher threshold for my approval.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-24.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Fred?
Aye.
An aye, passes four zero. Let's see, then we were going to set a new work, another work session in July?
Yeah, I had mentioned July 11th, just because that's, or 10th, because that's a Thursday. But there might be a couple of people gone during that timeframe. So sometime in the beginning of July. Again, we don't have a council meeting till the 17th. So we do wanna continue to talk about the budget, a few other things that we need to talk through. So maybe July 2nd.
It's Wednesday?
Kim's gone, it's Wednesday. So sometime in there, we'll get as many of us here as we can get here. It's a little tough time of the year.
What's, anyone?
Find a time with cheese in here, probably.
What was that?
I said, if I want to find a time with Kim, it's here.
Doesn't matter, I can have things right here.
Was there some conflicts with the 10th?
Well, Pat's gonna be gone.
I can remove it.
Earlier in the week...
You know what, I guess I'm out of town, too, come to think of it. I'm out of town the 8th to the 11th. Sorry.
And let's see, council's the 17th that week, or that month?
Yeah. What about Monday, the 7th? Kim, are you gone then, too?
Monday, I got Park Board.
Or, yeah, or, oh, that's right, we have the Park Board. How about Monday, the 14th? We're squeezing it right before the council meeting.
I do have fire training that night.
I've got a meeting that night.
I'll be going that week.
Let's not do that one.
Or how about, oh, there's a Wednesday EDA meeting, but we could...
Right before council?
Right before council. Tuesday is the code committee meeting. Well, yeah, that's not till seven, we could get in out here with it.
Is there anything on the 8th? Is there a meeting?
Ryan was gonna be gone.
Well, I'll be gone.
Fourth of July, 3/1.
How about July 1st? We're only, we're only a little bit away from that. Or maybe we just hold off on a, do we need a work session before the next council meeting? Or should we...
Look, if she removes him. I mean, is that, is she the only conflict that night?
So then the 2nd?
Wednesday, the 2nd?
I think that should, that should work.
Are we talking 5:30?
Whatever you guys want. We're here all day, so we can do whatever. What, 10 a.m.?
Yeah, we did do it 4:30.
4:30 to six.
I mean, I'm up in the cities that day. Probably five would be better, but I can try and make it back by 4:30.
Five?
So the, oops, July 2nd at five.
Okay. Thanks for being flexible, Kim.
Do we have a motion for that, I suppose?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we set a work session for July 2nd at 5:00.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. And then I guess we go to reports, Brian.
Oh, you know what, can we just, one thing here. We, Holly's not here, she thought the meeting was on Thursday, of course. But I made some notes somewhere here. Festival, and she'll be here next month, but festival's September 20th, 21st, parade on Sunday on Main Street. We know the process, or she knows the process of that. They wanna move the water fights over by the VFDW if possible. And we, Tony had put together a, what do we call that, parade and...
Permit?
Permit, yeah, a permit that... Yeah, where we get all the sign-offs. So between now and July 17th, we'll get, I'll get that to Holly, and she'll start working with Tony and the state and get all that stuff in order. And she'll bring any closure, road closures that we will need to approve and other approvals for council on July 17th. Or I think there's another meeting after that we could hit before, a couple, so, somewhere in there.
Ryan, from the fire department, has been working with me to find an appropriate spot out there.
Good.
Already been made aware of that we need to leave that access from Main Street on the first. He's open, so he's, things did be able to make it work out there, he's just...
Okay, good. So more to come, she was just gonna kind of give an overview like that. More permission to, can we still do the festival? Of course. I think that's it. Yep, and a big thank you to her for doing all the work on that. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Do you confirm the date one more time?
September 20th?
21st. Any other reports, Brian?
Oh, yeah. The new apartment building, I spoke with the developer this morning. They're looking at starting work on August 1st. There's a lot that needs to be done between now and then with plans and developers' agreement and all of that stuff. However, there's availability of a demo permit to start demoing, and then possibly, a possibility of a footing and foundation permit. I spoke with Safe Built, our building inspection company, about that. And so we will work with, work with Andy and Bob moving forward, but we should start seeing stuff really soon for our review. but we should start seeing stuff really soon for our review, and we'll have more updates for council. We had a new, we had a pool, the new pool, pool design meeting this morning. Uh, plan should be complete in, in mid-August-ish. Uh, they got the borings back and verified what they thought of the bedrock and all that, so they know what type of work needs to be done there. Uh, still looking at construction start this year, um, mid-September, late September, um, more than likely late September after bidding. Um, they're still saying, um, pool opening, new pool opening end of May of twenty-six. You gonna talk about that brine tank or possibility, or do you want me to? Okay, I was just gonna mention that, uh, Adam has been reaching out, looking for brine tanks. We had talked about having a brine tank and, and using brine with our truck that's got the capabilities. Um, and he, he found one, so I gave him the go-ahead to, to bring that in. It's gonna fit their needs, and they've all talked about it, so. Uh, they're gonna keep their eye open for an, and it's a used one, about twenty-five hundred bucks, five thousand or more for a new one, is what I'm told. And they're gonna keep an eye out for a separate tank for chloride, because the logistics, like, like you had talked about, making sure the tank is empty from the brine, so you get the chloride in there, and, and those logistics might be tough, so. Uh, we'll look for a second one, that way the efficiency is there. Still researching how much chloride we use, and so that'll hash out, too, but, but we're moving along on, on that initiative, so thanks to the guys for doing that. I attended the Mindot Complete Streets Training for, for a couple of days over here at the VFW. They bring in all of their, a bunch of their, their staff, engineering, uh, staff, and, um, and they, they have a case study that they study, and the case study they were studying, and the reason they had it here in Zbroda is the Highway Fifty-Eight reconstruction in twenty thirty-three, is what I'm hearing now. And again, it shifts a year or two depending on what funding looks like, but it was really good. I attended most of both days. I was not going to, I was gonna attend the walk and the panel, uh, but after I saw the agenda, you know, it was good to get an idea on, on how that, how they look at roads. And this complete streets thing is a whole, not just the, the road itself and the curve and the gutter and all that stuff, it's how does it fit in the city? You know, what are the city needs, aesthetics, uh, traffic calming, your control, you name it, everything. Uh, so it was very interesting, interesting. Did a walk all the way up Main Street and talked to several business owners. And speed was a huge issue for everybody, including those engineers and then everybody that we walked with. They said, I can't believe it feels like they're going so fast. And, uh, Tony and I and Bill went, um, and, uh, and Dave, David Grimshu took part in a, a panel to answer a bunch of questions, too, and they asked us stuff like that, and, yeah, we, we said, feels like they're going fast, but all in all, they're going pretty close to the speed limit. Tony's done some speed checks out there before, but you get a semi going through that small area with buildings on both sides, it's, it's loud and it feels like they're going fast. So they'll be looking at some measures to slow things down, down there. There's, you know, who knows? Could be appropriately-sized roundabouts in their various places, not downtown, of course, but to slow people down coming into town. Could be medians, could be bigger bumpouts, could be anything's on the board, but it was very interesting. Uh, well worth the time to, to spend, uh, two days. It was tough to spend two days in that, but, but it was good, I'm glad I went. And I've asked Kurt Wayne to give me an example of, because there'll be local cost sharing, depending on what we wanna do, that's outside of the scope of what Mindot pays for in a reconstruction like this. They're, they're, right now, they're revamping the way they're looking at things, um, and, and including more, so. But I asked him for an example, so we know as a city what we need to start putting away for any goals we might have for beautification or benches or some of those things that Mindot may not pay for when they come through, because it's a generational project, they use that word a lot. Um, you know, they won't be back for fifty years after this, so if there's things we wanna do down there to beautify, to slow things down, to make it the hometown feel, small-town feel, we need to do it in like eight years from now. So, so there'll be a lot more coming on that. And I was just gonna mention, I'm gonna be attending the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference next week, Wednesday to Friday, so I'll be out of the office, but accessible on iPhones. I think that's it.
Anything?
So this building, we haven't seen anything yet, and we got one meeting in July, and so if he wants to prove whatever in July, so they can get going in August, is that kind of?
We'll see, we'll see where it goes. That, that's what they were talking about, was getting started in August. And of course, the staff and the engineering crew will do the reviews, and then we, we go back to them with comments. Oh, that takes a couple of weeks. Um, then they gotta get back to us with any changes, and then once we get to a point where the developers agreement and plans that meet the specifications and everything we look for as a city, yeah, then we have to bring it back to, to the council, so. So you're right, you know, that July seventeenth meeting would be the one if they're gonna start. Now, I, I'm not sure that, that demo would be a big deal to start. Again, I don't know, I, we'll, we'll, we'll see where it goes here in the next couple of weeks, but, yeah, go ahead, Fred.
But when you guys get it and then send it back, will we be informed of what, when you get it, so we?
Of our reviews?
Yeah, when you said the staff will send it back, will we, will we be seeing, once they send all that stuff to you? So I just don't get it the night of our meeting.
Yeah, typically, typically you would get the final, um, the final plan uh, once they've taken care of all the corrections that staff and the engineers, um, come up with. Typically, the council wouldn't be involved with every change along the way, every requested change, but you can be as involved as you want to be.
Well, I just think, I think if you're getting it and you're finding stuff, good information for us to know what got sent back.
Okay.
It would, it would be good to have that first print, that first plan that they give us, that we can at least see it and start to look at it. That would be nice.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine.
I mean, so maybe we got some input, too, before it even goes back to them again?
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep you, keep you abreast on that, and of course, we have to review, too, what our, what our ordinance says, zoning ordinance and things like that, what the codes say and all of that. You know, we're dealing with a private property, um, and a developer on a private property. We have some say in, in the alleys, of course, and in our roads, and things like that, with access and all that. But yeah, you know, absolutely, we can, we can keep you informed all the way along the way, as much as you want to be.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything from the ambulance service tonight?
Actually, yes, thank you. I want to share with you, um, I think you're aware of the very high level of, sorry. Aware of the very high level of care that the ambulance service is providing to all of our communities. I would, we shared with you a few months ago that, that for the second year in a row, we have received a certificate of excellence in clinical care from the state of Minnesota. As of last Monday, June ninth, um, ambulance service was evaluated by the state of Minnesota for compliance with all of its rules, regulations, et cetera. I'm happy to report that this is the second year in a row that Zbroda area ambulances have achieved one hundred percent compliance. That's extremely, um, well done. Um, I can't tell you how many other ambulance services are able to do that, um, but I know that it's, it's a big deal. The other thing, as just a smidge of background, when the state of Minnesota comes in to do their survey, they touch everything in all three ambulances, they go through the office. They, they touch a lot of things, they ask a lot of questions, and they do, um, a lot of things, so. Just to make sure that, that the community is aware that the service being provided for our, from our crew members meets an extremely high-quality standard from the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything tonight?
No, not, not tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Pat?
Nothing for me.
Tony? Jeff, do you have anything? Kim? Alson?
I have nothing.
Joan?
I have nothing.
Fred?
So I was just wondering that, that crosswalk that we approved a while ago by app, is that gonna be getting done here soon, or?
Yeah, I talked to Larry, those guys about it, it's on their radar or whatever, but, um, completion of the festival, they're fresh and everything up there, but, um, they have to, they do know about it. I think the, the advisor, the lineator is here, everything works, so.